Good afternoon. I am going to call to order this regular meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, May 15th. My name is Andrea Jenkins and I am the Chair of this committee. With me at the dais are Council members Johnson, Pomassano, Fletcher, Ellison, Council President Bender, Councilmember Worsami, Councilmember Cunningham, Fletcher—I think I already said Councilmember Fletcher—but Councilmember Canno and Goodman, as well as Councilmember Schrader. Let the record reflect that we do have a quorum. Also, Councilmember Goodman has joined us as well. So before us today, we have one discussion item, two racial equity subcommittee items and reports of committees. We have staff presentations for items number one and three on the agenda. So if there is no objection, I will treat item number two as a consent item and take that up first. That item is the approval of four council appointments to fill the vacancies on the racial equity community advisory committee. And those appointments are Juhi Pomplin, C. Terrence Anderson, Q. Ani Omar, and Samantha Priestensen. So I move the approval of these appointments on item number two on our agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries. I will now return to item number one, which is the status update on the Strategic Racial and Racial Equity Action Plan. And that report will be given by Ms. Joy Marsh Stevens from the City Coordinator's Office.
Good afternoon, Chair and committee members. We are here—so Joy Marsh Stevens from the Division of Racial Equity in the City Coordinator's Office. I am also joined by Nick Campbell and Melanie Plusensky. We're going to walk you through an update on the Strategic Racial Equity Action Plan. I'll provide a bit of background and then Nick and Melanie will provide more context around some of the work that's currently ongoing with our external policy areas. So just as a reminder, the council did adopt admission, vision, values, and goals for the city—or for this work over the course of the last few months. The Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan is a portion of that work. It's aligned with our mission, vision, and values and the goals, and it sets a set of priorities for us to be looking at that the city has adopted or that the council has adopted, those specific priorities, looking at our internal operations of our work as well as externally around economic development, housing, and public safety. Our presentation today will focus on the status of the work for housing and economic development, and we'll come back at a later time to provide an update on the public safety So again, the eight goal—or the goal areas that the city established, that the city council adopted, of those goal areas, we are looking at setting a priority around, again, public safety, housing, and economic development. This is all information that we've shared in the past, just wanting to make sure that we're rooting today's presentation within the context of the decisions that have happened The actual components of the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan focus on our internal operational priorities, which we established and council adopted back in December of last year, looking at how we spend our money, how we diversify our workforce, how we look at racially segregated data and use it in the legislative process, and then lastly, how we leverage our boards and commissions as a vehicle through which we can actually do deeper engagement in leveraging them to help us advance racial equity. The external policy priority areas that we just—that I just mentioned around public safety, economic development, and housing, all focus those priorities on our external policy areas that are part of the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan. As we get more specific, again, back in December 2018, council did adopt the priority areas that I established—that—I'm sorry—that I just referenced around workforce, specifically looking at increasing the hiring and retention of people of color and indigenous people in the city's workforce, spend specifically looking at how we increase the percent count of and spend with racially and ethnically diverse suppliers across all of our city departments, with data how we're improving the utilization of racially segregated data in the decision-making process, in the legislative process for a city council and the mayor, and lastly, around community engagement, specifically looking at how we improve the capacity of our appointed boards and commissions to advance the city's racial equity work. With the three external policy priority areas around public safety, looking at how we can eliminate the disproportionate impact of violence in Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities, with housing, reducing evictions among communities of color so that disparities are eliminated between Black, Indigenous, people of color and communities and white people, and then lastly, with economic development, increasing the number of businesses owned by people of color so that the disparity between Black, Indigenous, people of color communities, and white people is eliminated. So these are the priority areas that were established by council, and then the direction given to us earlier this year was to take with these three external policy priority areas the time to go work with our key stakeholders, both internally and externally to the city, to dig down deeper and identify what are called strategic need statements. Strategic need statements, problem areas that we're focusing on, and some of the vital few projects and the metrics of urgency that we're going to use in order to be able to move this work forward. Ultimately, the results of those engagements that we're having with those key stakeholders will result in, again, that strategic need being identified across all of those different seven—those seven priority areas, that key lagging indicator for how we're going to be able to look back and say, how were we successful in meeting that goal? The problem statement, SMART goals, the metric of urgency, which is really that leading indicator, while we're in the midst of the process, how are we being able to measure if we're on track? Those vital few projects are those activities that we're going to be able to take on as a city to accomplish that goal, and then lastly, a work plan at a high level for what that work looks like for our departments in order to move the work forward. The actual SREP, as it's referred to, will be that comprehensive set of information across all of those seven policy priorities that I just mentioned. So next, I'm going to call up Nick Campbell, who's going to walk us—Melanie Plusensky, thank you, who's going to walk us through some of the work that we've been doing around engagement and talk with us more specifically around the work that we're doing with our housing policy priority area.
Thank you, Joy. Thank you. So the work that has been done on the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan to date includes last fall strategic planning retreats that took place, as well as, as Joy mentioned, the adoption of the operational and policy priorities in February of 2019. Presently, this spring, we are conducting ongoing community engagement on the policy priority areas, as well as doing an analysis of available and existing data across topic areas, and conducting subject matter expert workshops, which I'll talk a little bit more So my colleagues and I have been conducting community engagement activities in a variety of forums since the—since beginning in March, and those include six in-community facilitated dialogue sessions in communities most impacted by the inequities in these areas. We've done tabling and outreach at community events where we have been invited to do so. We have scheduled and conducted one-on-one meetings with impacted community stakeholders and organizational leaders, as well as providing support to the Racial Equity Community Advisory Committee and how they can be of assistance and support in leading, moving the SREP plan forward. And finally, we have created a survey form for those who may want to provide input, comment, or questions, but haven't been available to have in-person conversations or dialogues with us on the topic areas. The subject matter expert workshops, as I mentioned, are two-day-long working sessions with both city internal staff leadership, as well as external partner stakeholder and organizational leadership that have expertise in these areas. And those meetings have been completed and established, except for the final public safety meeting, which will occur next week on the 21st of May. So given an update specifically on what—where we are at with working on the housing priority area, as Joy mentioned, the strategic need established and adopted by council in February of 2019 was to reduce evictions specifically among communities of color, to reduce and eliminate disparities. And we see that this is data from the Evictions in Minneapolis 2016 report, showing us that both filings and judgments, there's a trend in decreasing numbers in both of those areas, but there is also evidence to show us that in impacted ZIP codes, that there is still disproportionate burden with involuntary displacement. So the source of that evidence is both in the report I just mentioned, as well as results that came out of these subject matter expert sessions and community engagement, that qualitative data piece that we have gathered, which points to the fact that there are potentially significant number of renters who are displaced through what might be considered informal evictions, to include being given a notice to vacate, lease non-renewals, simply being asked to leave, or reasons associated with a lack of knowledge about rights and responsibilities. And in those types of situations, there may not be data that exists. Those individuals and families are not reflected in the data, but that there's consensus that it's important that they are included in potential solutions. So this is a really high-level snapshot kind of overview of what we heard in community dialogue sessions and members that we—community members we've engaged with, in that there is a critical need to implement intervention and action to address discrimination and maltreatment of tenants by predatory landlords, which is contributing to involuntary displacement. There is need to increase access to expungement for individuals with unlawful detainer on their records, need to increase safe, affordable, permanent housing, ideally with access and connection to culturally relevant health, social, and psychological supportive services, and also the need for awareness of rights, responsibilities, and regulations for tenants to prevent displacement, especially those who are most vulnerable. And because of the evidence I just mentioned, not only evictions impacting displacement, the strategic need has been updated to reducing involuntary displacement in rental housing for Black, Indigenous, immigrant, and people of color communities that are most disproportionately In the working meeting—in the working meetings, this value stream of involuntary displacement process was identified, with the beginning being that a resident needs housing, the end being that the resident moves out, and somewhere along within these steps of this process is where there is opportunity for the city to invest vital projects in the next three years to impact—have the greatest impact on the goal as it is established. And currently, we are working on doing deeper analysis of data, working with department process owners, and looking at what that's going to look like in work plans and implementation going forward. So with that being said, I'll hand it over to my colleague Nick Campbell to give an update on the priority area in economic development. Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Plusensky. Before you leave, I'm curious, at the beginning of your presentation, you identified that evictions had been steadily decreasing, though they were still disproportionate in particular ZIP codes, and it looked like it was 55411, 12. But what do you attribute to the decrease?
I will acknowledge that I'm not an expert in owning this data. I'm also new in my role, so I would ask for assistance and support and reasons for why the eviction filings have been decreasing over the last 10 years.
So I don't—Chair Jenkins, I don't know if we necessarily know what the answer is. I think the partners who are at the table, who are in the subject matter expert workshops, might have better insight or even city staff around, but it was clear in conversations that the disparity isn't changing, even though they're reducing—they're being reduced over all over time, the disparity isn't changing. In some cases, it's increasing.
Did you recognize this, Councilmember Bender? Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I wondered—so I just want to say I could talk about this for like eight hours, so I'll try to just be focused and really excited about this work. Could you go back, let's see, to the part where you had changed the language in the strategic need? So when we were originally talking about the draft strategic needs that we adopted as a council, one reason I think we chose to do evictions instead of something that would be described as involuntary displacement was because of a potential concern about being able to track the data related to involuntary displacement rather than evictions, which is easier to track. Can you talk about how we might be able to measure this—the involuntary displacement piece?
Chair Jenkins, Councilmember Bender, there was a great deal of discussion, and really active discussion with subject matter experts, specifically to your question. There was a lot of debate around changing that, be from something very specific like evictions to involuntary displacement, and my response can be that the consensus was that we cannot leave these people behind who are being displaced for reasons other than eviction, because of predatory landlord procedures and things that we know are actually happening that are impacting rates of homelessness and people not having the opportunity to be well because of not having stable housing, so.
Can I ask a follow-up? So then I would assume that we're still measuring evictions, so we'll still have that data, so we will just do our—I mean, we'll do our best to also track something that might be harder to track and understand. I have a little concern—I just don't want us to—because one of the things I think is such a benefit of this process is we've already identified this as a priority in the council, we're doing a lot of things, but this will help us, I think, ideally over time, understand what's working, which things maybe need to be tweaked, where we should really put more resources or not, and so I just don't want us, because of lack of data, to assume that strategies aren't working, when maybe they are actually having meaningful impact in reducing involuntary displacement, for example.
Absolutely. So Chair Jenkins, Council President Bender, we're at this stage of the process around housing and economic development and public safety, where our strategic need is really— one, it's informed by the conversation that we've had with our community stakeholders, but we're also at a place of not limiting the focus of it because of the solutions or limitations within the potential solution, particularly around how we're tracking data. So for example, if we ultimately do land on a statement around involuntary displacement and we feel confident in that, then the responsibility that follows is how do we actually measure that, and the need to potentially create some new solutions around how we measure and track the data to be able to be able—to be able to measure progress towards the goal.
And then if I may—I mean, for what it's worth, I think this term better reflects the intention of the council, so I think you'll find support for that direction. And the original reason to have gone with something as specific as evictions was about, again, about concern over data, so I'm excited to see it expand. I think it does get to what we're trying to really prevent, so appreciate the time to ask questions.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to give a brief update on the economic development priority of the Strategic and Racial Equity Action Plan, and I just want to acknowledge the CPED Director, David Frank, is in the room, who is also one of the process owners for this priority. So the strategic need that was adopted by this body in February was around increasing the number of businesses owned by people of color, so the disparity between Black, Indigenous, people of color, immigrant communities, and white people is eliminated. Some of the data that was looked at as a part of the process so far was really around not just the number of businesses and the disparity between the number of businesses in Minneapolis, but also the sustainability of those businesses, the wealth creation of those businesses. And so there was some data that was done a few—that was analyzed a few years ago, showing that disparity, and anecdotally, we also—there was also folks involved in the room who could speak to that gap in not just the number, and if you actually look at some of the data, that number is increasing, but doesn't necessarily mean that the growth of those businesses, or the sustainability, or the success of those businesses is being addressed. And so this is a parity measure chart showing what the actual number of businesses, gross receipts, and employees are compared to if businesses owned by people of color were at parity with businesses owned by white people. And so you can see there's some significant gaps, not just in the number, but again, in the amount of money those businesses are making and the number of employees those businesses In community, during the community engagement sessions, some of the themes echoed that, specifically, some of the specifics that were spoken to were around increasing access to capital, culturally-specific training and education, supportive information about how to expand and grow, not just start. Small business owners would benefit from capacity building and skill building around marketing, design, financial management, so again, more of that skill-building piece and capacity-building piece and education. We also heard that, again, this isn't just about starting businesses or that we're increasing the number of businesses, but it's really about wealth creation and closing gaps in So with that, in those subject matter expert workshops, the strategic need was again revised to better reflect those components. So it remained largely the same, but instead of just talking about increasing the number, it was about—we changed it to increasing the entry and sustainability of businesses in Minneapolis owned by people of color, so that the disparity between Black, Indigenous, people of color, immigrant communities, and white people is eliminated. Am I close enough to this? So Melanie talked about the value stream in the housing session, so one of the value streams that rose to the top in the metrics of urgency subject matter expert workshops was around really how do you connect entrepreneurs of color to supportive resources? And again, there's a lot of components, and there was a lot of different street value streams or processes that were talked about, but with both taking account work that's already happening, both in the city and outside the city, and also where the city has a role to play, this value stream was one of the things that rose to the top in those discussions. And so the process for connection to support resources was around, you know, a business owner reaches out to someone from the city for help, and this could be not just for a regulatory issue, but it could be for anything, and we know we have a lot of good work happening with the small business team, specifically focusing on that regulatory piece, and then doing some sort of business needs assessment, identifying what resources are available, both city resources, but also external resources and organizations, and then a step of determining what kind of what the plan of action is to help address the needs of those—of that business or entrepreneur, and then actually providing that connection. And so that's a process that the city is involved in at a lot of different levels, and sometimes it happens through the small business team, sometimes it happens through staff at CPED, sometimes it can happen through a council member maybe even. And so digging into this a little farther, there's some additional work that we're going to be doing with the process owners to identify how well are entrepreneurs getting connected to what they need, and are they—is it helping them meet their need based on what resources exist, and then are they satisfied with how long it's taking to get connected?
Excuse me, we have a question from—
Sure, Councilmember Cunningham. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this portion of the presentation. So I have a couple of questions. So the first is—and I'm not sure if you're able to answer this, or maybe it might be Mr. Frank, but are we able to have race and gender-specific programming in—when it comes to starting businesses?
I will leave that to maybe someone else in the room, but—
So I'm getting kind of a head shake no. Sorry to put you on the spot there, Mr. Frank.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Cunningham, David Frank from CPED. I don't believe so as I stand here. We could certainly check with our city attorney's office, but I know you know that's not how any of our programs is set up right now, and I don't believe we can.
Okay. Thank you for that. For Madam City Attorney, that's something that I would—if—do you have any specific comments on that at this point, or is it something we should come back to?
Councilmember Cunningham, yeah, I'd rather consult with the people in my office who know this area better than I do before I comment.
Awesome. Thank you. I would like to follow up on that. And so—and thank you, everybody. So then, when it talks about resources, connection to supportive resources, are those resources in-house, or are we talking about external partners?
Yeah, we're not talking—it could be either. So this is like high level. It could be internal financing resources, it could be external financing resources, it could be business planning resource—like really anything when a business problem arises for an entrepreneur or a small business owner, whatever that problem is, connecting to whatever. And it might not even be a resource. It could be a network, it could be a person. The resource isn't necessarily just a specific program or tool. It could be a lot of different things, both internally or externally.
Great. Thank you. And then my last question, if I may, Madam Chair, is—so we talk about wealth creation and retention. So that's—one of the challenges, for example, is credit. So there are—particularly with Black businesses, there are three areas that really get in the way. It's starting capital, it's credit, and then it's trust. There are gaps in those three areas. So for example, businesses won't even come to the city to ask for help because they don't trust that they ultimately will get help, or that they would qualify for it. So have—has there been consideration about the component of like those barriers that come up? I know that that's not necessarily explicitly named here, but just taken into consideration, because that is what research has shown, particularly for Black businesses, are those three big barriers.
Yeah. Yeah, those—I mean, those were all parts of the conversation, and I think that's going to continue to come up as, again, we narrow down—as the value stream gets narrowed down with—through work—continue to work with those process owners and city staff, but also continued external stakeholders to then focus in where the breakdown is in this value stream, and if that breakdown where we will have the biggest impact in addressing is financial capital, for example, and then talking through, okay, how do we develop the solution that's going to have an impact on what that breakdown was—where that breakdown was identified? And like—and you're right, we do know where that breakdown is in some cases already, yeah.
Great. Well, I just want to say that I would like for those three particular areas to be taken into consideration as we're breaking down deeper into the work, because I've read lots of research on this, and so it's credit, access to capital, and trust. Those are the three gaps, so just to put that—
Thank you.
—out there. Thank you.
Please continue.
Okay. So just, again, what is next, or kind of next steps from here? Melanie mentioned, so we have day two of the public safety session next week. As a part of—I already alluded to it—two for each of these policy areas, there's that deeper work and planning that's going to be happening with process owners and departments to get exact—get to get at exactly the specifics for the plan around the problem statement, the lagging indicators, the vital projects, the work— the lagging indicators, the vital projects, the work plan. And then we still have continued community engagement activities happening. And then again, the final piece will be that work plan that then departments will work off of to actually achieve the projects that are outlined in the plan that's adopted. Some of that, just to dig a little deeper, some of that additional engagement and communications that's happening. So we're continuing to circulate the survey for public comment on each of the policy priorities. We've been sharing plan updates since this has been a process, and there are process updates like we're sharing today. So we've been sharing updates, and we'll continue to share updates with partner organizations, stakeholders, and city advisory committees, both who maybe attended the sessions and want to know where things are at. And then we're posting process updates on the city website as well. And then some internal pieces is continuing to share updates on the plan with leadership in the city, working with department process owners on finalizing those components of the plan. And then as it's finalized, working with communications, really informing staff how the plan will impact their work. And again, just a reminder of when that next session is. I can stand for any other questions that folks have.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? I would just like to thank Ms. Joy March Stevens and her staff for this update. I think it's really important that the council, because these parts are sort of separated, and to bring them all together so that we can all have a status update of where we are in this process. So thank you very much. So with that, I would move to receive and file this update. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries. And then under our Race Equity Subcommittee Agenda, item number three is a status update on the implementation and the additional work related to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. That presentation will be given by Heather Worthington from the Community Planning and Economic Development Department. Welcome, Ms. Worthington.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. I have a very brief presentation to make. I wanted to, our staff put together a graphic that we hope will help explain how the comprehensive plan can help the city council move forward with strategic initiatives like the SRE project, but also other policy creation and changes that you have directed staff to do. So we tried to put a graphic together that would help you understand how the comprehensive plan informs and helps to guide this work. So I'll just walk you through this very quickly. On the, on the left, you see Minneapolis 2040 and the policies that are contained within that document that relate to goal number one around eliminating disparities. And so there's, there's a variety of things on this list. There's your commitment, your stated commitment, both through adoption of the comp plan and existing work like the Strategic Racial Equity Action Planning, that is, that represents a commitment to ending disparities in the city. So there are a number of planning processes and activities that are occurring, including the SRE work, but also things that include the Transportation Action Plan, which several of you are involved in, the Capital Improvement Program, Strategic and Racial Equity Action Planning, which I already mentioned, work on the Coordinated Development Strategy, which is called out in some detail in the comprehensive plan, the Unified Housing Policy and Inclusionary Zoning work, Resilient Minneapolis, Green Zones, Cultural Districts, and the zoning update. The zoning update, obviously, you will get a deeper update from Jason Wittenberg and the code development team at a later meeting. This is merely a discussion today about how the policy impact of this document can show up in the work that the city does on a regular basis. And then how the community experiences the work is really through your work on the city budget, through regulatory actions, programs and services, and department work plans. So I just wanted to offer this graphic to you as maybe an aid in explaining to constituents and other parties how the comprehensive plan is used to help identify activities that impact our work on eliminating disparities and how this work can touch most, or if not all, of the city as we go forward. Happy to answer any questions, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Well, just while you're here, and when I read the agenda item, I guess it was going to be a little bit, I thought it might be a little bit more, can you just let us know where the comp plan is in the process at the Met Council? And just generally in terms of approval and implementation and where it is?
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. The comprehensive plan is under review by the Metropolitan Council. We expect a word from them by the end of the summer on their action. So they are reviewing about 185 of them right now.
Have they sent back any communication to us?
They have, and we've made that available to the city council, and we have made revisions per their request and resubmitted it.
Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Worthington, for that update. And it's brevity. And if there are no other questions or comments, I move to receive and file this presentation. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. And that item carries. And before we move into our committee reports, I just want to make sure to acknowledge that Councilmember Reich is on city business this afternoon, and so subsequently is not here with us today. And we will now move to the reports of our committees. And we will begin with the Budget Committee, and that would be given by its chair, Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This last cycle, we received and filed many, results Minneapolis Department reports from Reich Services, Finance, the City Clerk, and Internal Audit. Nothing, no actions on that need be taken on Friday, but I'm happy to answer any questions. It was a robust piece. We're exactly halfway through the Results Minneapolis work, so thank you for everybody's attention and participation on that. I also wanted to point out that tomorrow, we have our biggest last meeting. We'll have several reports, including police and public works, and the attorney, the city assessor, and fire. So thank you for your continued work on that.
Thank you, Chair Palmasano. Are there any questions? Are there any questions seeing none? The next committee report is the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee Report, given by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing nine for, nine items forward for tomorrow. Item number one is a sidewalk cafe permit for Blue Door and Longfellow. This item, we will be postponing one cycle. Item number two is our building fees permit ordinance. Item three are the liquor license approvals, and four is the liquor license renewals. Item five is our gambling license approvals. Item six is accepting a redevelopment grant from deed for the Lake Street Apartments. Item seven is a fairly large item, or small item, it's a contract amendment on the Great Seas Business to Support Grants. Essentially, what we're saying is if you haven't been able to get your grant out the door, that's okay. We'll give you a little bit more time. Item eight is appointments to the Upper Harbor Terminal Community Planning Committee, as well as changing the name of the committee, an item number, well, that's, the change of the name is an item number nine. So appointments and then a change in the name from Upper Harbor Terminal Community Engagement Committee to Upper Harbor Terminal Collaborative Planning Committee. So those are the items one through nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are there any comments? Are there any comments? I'd like to name change to collaborative.
I wish I could take credit for that, but that was Councilmember Cunningham's suggestion and motion, and I think I like it, too.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. And, oh yes, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the shout out. So I just want to say how excited I am for this committee. The reason why we changed the name, well, aside from the fact that the shorthand was CPAC, which is really close to CPED, and CPAC, which is a component of the development, but also really to ingrain the fact that it's a collaborative process. I heard loud and clear from the community that there was a need for a mechanism that actually had the community heavily and deeply involved in the planning process, and that's exactly what we're having here. So operationalizing it, we're going to be having deliberative democracy really ingrained throughout, so folks are going to be deeply informed on it and being able to make that hard choice work about the housing, about the Performing Arts Center, and so on. And the folks that we have on the committee are really amazing. We have folks who are bringing lots of connections, assets, strengths, and I'm really excited to be working alongside them and grateful that they said yes to this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. And so our next committee report then is the Housing Policy and Development Committee, given by its chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Vice President. The Housing Policy Committee will be bringing four, six items for approval. First item is approving the Redwell Tax Increment Financing Plan. Second item is decertifying three different tax increment financing districts, the Phillips Park Project, the Hanipin and Seventh One, which is also the Block E Mail Clinic Square, and then the Many Rivers Tax Increment Financing Districts. The third item is authorizing submittal of grants to the Metropolitan Council Liberal Communities Demonstration Program, and also their Transit Orient Development Grants. Fourth also has to do with the Redwell Project, that's just passage of the bond issuance. The fifth item is authorizing a one-year contract renewal, basically, with Home Line to provide free legal advice, education, and resources to Minneapolis renters. And the sixth item is approving appointments to the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority. And I'm happy to take questions on any of those items.
Thank you, Chair Gordon. Are there any questions? Are there any questions seeing none? We will then move to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee, or the Peace Committee, given by its chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights and Engagement Committee brings forward, is going to be bringing forward five items for approval this Friday. The first is appointments to the Violence Prevention Steering Committee, the mayoral appointment of Chief Aradondo, as well as Sheriff Hutchinson, the council appointment of Jennifer White, and the council appointment of Lance Lamont. The second is passage of a resolution accepting the use of space and facilities at Metropolitan State University for the Urban Scholars Program. Number three is authorizing the submittal of a U.S. Department of Health and Human Services First Responder Comprehensive Addiction and Recovery Act grant to allow first responders and members of other key community sectors to administer a drug or device known or cleared under the FDA for emergency treatment of known or suspected opioid overdose. Number four is a accepting program funding, 2019 Urban Scholars Program funding from partner organizations. And number five is, it's a staff direction around the Neighborhood 2020 Framework. I'll go ahead and read through it since it's new, a new item. So directing the Neighborhood and Community Relations Department staff in partnership with Finance and Property Services staff and others as needed to do the following. Collaborate with CURA to complete the resident-led process of furthering the Neighborhood 2020 Framework, developing program guidelines at the collaborate level based on the International Association of Public Participation Spectrum. This process is completed, be completed by October 28, 2019. The aspects of the work should include, but are not limited to, development of overall program goals and outcomes, metrics to measure progress towards goals, defining a racial equity analysis of neighborhood association operation and activities, development of a logic model that includes inputs, activities, outputs, and outcomes, convening of various stakeholders. Six, identifying a neutral, budget-neutral structure of NCR to best support neighborhood associations. Seven is defining preferred funding stream for ongoing funding of neighborhood associations. And the last is leveraging the work completed thus far to develop the Neighborhood 2020 Framework and program guidelines. I just want to let folks know that based on conversations that I've had with colleagues, that I will also be bringing forward some amendments around the wording here, but also additions. So the additions will include for, it's essentially directions for CURA, the bounds for them to work within, so work within the $4.1 million currently allocated to neighborhood organizations, to publish the proposed framework for public comment by July 1, 2019, and to report back to the Peace Committee with the framework, with a proposed framework for approval on July 15, 2019. For CURA to meet bimonthly with internal city stakeholders, a committee made up of the NCR Director, NCR Lead Staff, the Peace Committee Chair, two council members representative from the mayor's office, the CFO and the city coordinator, an optional participation in the Neighborhood Election Day, as well as community-based organizations collaborating, must collaborate with neighborhood organizations to access funding. So just to give folks that, and I will be sure to send that around so folks see that, including the clerk's office. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions on any items.
Thank you, Councilmember Cunningham. Are there any questions? Councilmember Connaughton.
I just wanted to seek clarification. So the language that Councilmember Cunningham mentioned invol, said specifically that the collaboration between nonprofit organizations and neighborhood associations must be present, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may respond?
Yeah, it's your suggestion of a proposal, I think?
Yes, so that's, that is based on the amendments that were brought forward by Councilmember Gordon during the committee, so that's what those, that's based on.
Okay. Okay, so I was, I was, I thought we had amended that specific language to say that that wasn't required because we know that there are some neighborhood associations who's, who have a sort of chronic tradition of not being able to partner with community-based groups. So I was pretty sure we had amended that to reflect the new language.
So the, the change that happened, the amendments, this was amended, the amendments that were brought forward were to amend the original framework, the resolution, and that failed in committee. So, so those are, did not pass, excuse me, did not pass in committee. So therefore, I wanted to make sure that that was included, because those were concerns that were, that were brought in, so I wanted to make sure that that was included in the staff direction and was addressed. So that, but if that's something that you are interested in having further conversation about and that changing, I am glad for us to have that dialogue.
Yeah, I'll work with you and others, you know, offline here to work through that specific concern, because some of the community-based organizations in Ward Nine have been, you know, blocked off from receiving resources and collaborating in community because they can't get along with the neighborhood association. And so there's, there's like a lot of nuances, I think, to how this can get structured. So I'd love to just be able to work with you all more specifically on how we roll that part of it out. So I'll just, yeah, so I'll just reach out to you all after the meetings.
Councilmember Gordon.
I just wanted to note that the motions that did pass are in your binder, if you want to see what the three amendments were to the framework. And the one, Councilmember Connaughton was right, it says, "Establishing a preference to community-based organizations that receive funding from this program are encouraged to partner with the neighborhood organization, but will not be barred from receiving funding as long as the work completed meets our city's racial equity goals." So that did gain the committee's support on the way. It was an interesting, interesting meeting. Anybody who was there or paid any attention will, might recall that I was supportive of approving a framework, but I also supported the staff direction, thinking we may be able to have an approved framework that was now the council's framework to be worked on further. And I'm still open to supporting the staff direction, but I'm also still very open into seeing if we can approve some kind of framework at this point. I think the risks to the future of neighborhood organizations without approving a framework now as a council and being clear about it and having the mayor sign off on it as he's entering into his writing, drafting, and preparing his budget could be so great that it's, it's not worth... it's not worth the wait. I appreciate that there's a willingness to engage. And the fact is with the framework in place, there's still policy guidelines that'll have to be developed, there'll be details to work out, and there's big questions about the funding as well. And I think with the framework that we had, we were very close to something that I think helped address some of the few concerns with neighborhood organizations, but still really clearly indicate that they're valuable and they'll continue to be valued in our organization. So I'm hopeful maybe there's some opportunity between now and Friday to continue working together to come up with a framework that can be approved and maybe a staff direction that folks can live with too.
Councilmember Cunningham, and then Councilmember Binder.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I just wanted to respond and say that I will update the amendment that I, or the addition that I will be bringing forward to more accurately reflect what was passed by the committee. So I just wanted to share that component of it.
Councilmember Binder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make a little bit of comment about the process for Friday, just given what came out of committee, which is a little unusual, just in terms of the underlying motion, you know, failing to pass and then also not coming forward without recommendation, which often happens from committees. So the clerk has sent a long email to council members about process recommendations. I just want to publicly invite council members to talk with me if you have any questions or concerns. I want to make sure that this important decision that we have to make together as policymakers and as a body isn't sort of disrupted or confused by process. And so we have, you know, we have a series of votes to take and a series of decisions to make. And so I just, again, want to make sure that we are transparent and collaborative in how we are approaching making those decisions and not complicating with frustrations around process. So it's my goal on Friday and going forward to make sure that all the council members feel like, you know, if they have a motion they want to make or an amendment to do, that those things are able to be included and that we not, anyone feel like they're being sort of cut out or frustrated by process. So please review the email and let me know if you have any questions or concerns. And then just want to make also a brief comment about this process from my perspective. To me, you know, I can kind of identify the series of decisions that are in front of us. We have a draft framework, which has come from the committee with some amendments. At this time, I'm not able to support the framework as it is coming to us, whether it does or not on Friday, or if it goes back to committee, for all kinds of reasons, coming from my constituents and neighborhood organizations alike. And so, but my perspective is, if the majority of the council supports adopting the framework, I have concerns about also approving a process that would seek to have more engagement around something that had already been improved by the council. So I've been talking with all of you and really thankful for Councilmember Cunningham for your thoughtful leadership on this and everyone else who's gotten so engaged. But I just wanted to voice that concern that, you know, sometimes the votes are just there, the votes are just the votes, and I might not agree, or others may have other ideas, but I don't want to create more process, ask people for more time if at the end of the day, the majority of the council is comfortable moving forward with what's before us. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will now move to our next committee's report. The Public Safety Emergency Management Committee, given by Chair Connaughton.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Today, the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee brings forward one item for the full council for consideration, which is a contract with Hennepin County Human Services and the Public Health Department for Mental Health Services. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chair Connaughton. Are there any questions? Are there any questions seeing none? Our next committee report is the Transportation and Public Works Committee, and that report will be given by Council President Binder.
Congressman Fletcher usually does it. Fletcher's ready. He's the honorary vice chair.
Councilmember Fletcher, do you have your report ready?
Thank you, Chair Jenkins. Transportation and Public Works is bringing forward 13 items for council consideration. Item number one is the Hennepin Avenue South areaway abandonment and removal. Items two and three are large block event permits, one of which has already happened, but one of which we could still impact with a council vote. Item number four is an agreement with MinDOT for landscaping improvements at Broadway and University. Item number five is an agreement with the Met Council for design of enhanced bus shelters. Item number six is a contract amendment around Hennepin Avenue street reconstruction work. Item number seven is a temporary construction easement for the 10th Avenue Bridge work with the park board. Item number eight is approving, authorizing amendments to the operating plans and budgets for the special service districts. Item number nine is a grant from MPCA for electric vehicle charging stations. Item 10 is a grant application to MPCA for more electric vehicle charging stations. Item 11 is a request for proposals for the 2020 to 2023 Public Works Consulting Pool. Item 12 is authorizing our participation in the Minneapolis Duluth Superior Passenger Rail Alliance Board. And item 13 is an agreement with the Minnesota Commercial Railroad for 33rd Street East Street Reconstruction Project. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Fletcher. Are there any questions? Are there any questions seeing none? We'll move to the next committee report, the Ways and Means Committee, given by Chair Councilmember Osami.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Ways and Means Committee has seven items to bring to the full council. First item is a contract. Second item is also a contract. The third item is a bid. The fourth item is a request or proposal for investment management services. The fifth item is a gift acceptance. The sixth item is also a gift acceptance. And the seventh item is a gift acceptance as well. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Chair Osami. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? And next, and our last committee report, is the Zoning and Planning Committee, given by Chair Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Zoning and Planning Committee will bring forward two items for approval on Friday. The first is the approval of rezoning at 5043 Irving Avenue South, and the second is the approval of rezoning in alley vacation for 1906 through 1914 Queen Avenue North and 1911 through 1915 Penn Avenue North. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Chair Schrader. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Seeing none, and seeing that there is no further business before our committee, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.